I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting
Recording in progress.
To order. And Paul Skam, please rise for the pledge. Mr. Escalier, will you listen?
Sure thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one tribe, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And Brittany, a roll call?
We have Dana.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Our chair, Joseph Gilbert.
Here. He may join us a little bit later. Okay. And minutes. Do we have minutes?
We do. We have one set. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from Monday, February 26, 2024, as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will sustain that was in present. Oh, yeah. That's right. Public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend to address on the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, and all the company institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair, that doesn't mean, may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial in respect of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure, participate, please attend in person. Thank you. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Very quickly, if I may. Just wanted to give a quick update. Should I? Oh, Tom Logan, 28 Kirkstown. Had some communication about this. Things happened very quickly after our last select board meeting, where I was listening to the DPW's proposal that I did, and there was a proposal to buy a mini pavement machine to repair our sidewalks. Bud, our superintendent, when asked, he said, well, it'll save us a lot of time and a lot of money because they're going to build it a lot faster. I said, well, would this be just for new stuff or would it be replacing concrete? And he said, we'd be taking out the concrete and putting in the asphalt. And I said, huh, okay. So I just took that away from the meeting and I started looking into things. And what I, in a very short summary, came up with was that concrete's actually cheaper than asphalt, because it lasts so much longer. But of course, it takes a lot longer to put in, slower, and it's more expensive. But I tried to get in touch with the superintendent, DPW superintendent, to discuss this, but he was unfortunately in training. So I found out from Town Hall that if we wanted to ensure that we only had concrete sidewalks, we'd have to submit a petition and vote on it as a town. So I did that in a day because the deadline was that Thursday. So things happened very quickly. So I wanted to give you all copies of that. It's certified now, if you'd like that. And then with the formal verbiage of justice and advice. And then I have other phases of things that I'm working on and working on with the community, with Dalton folks who are interested. And so there's multiple phases to this. So hopefully, I'll be able to talk to everybody, including Bud and the board.
Great.
So should I drop those off?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, for sure.
Sure.
Just one point of clarification.
Yes.
Tom, you said they were going to buy this machine to take out concrete and replace the blacktop.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Is this currently in used concrete?
Yes.
You can take out stuff that's permanently gone?
No, 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 no.
That's the point of clarification.
It would be failing concrete sidewalks that need to be repaired.
Failing, yes.
Instead of...
Okay.
And... Sure. And the only other thing I would mention, and this is something that I'd like to talk to the superintendent about, is that there are methods of repairing concrete that's not totally dissimilar. Lifting and leveling, other techniques. So I just wanted to talk to him about that, precautionary.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure. I think I have copies for everybody.
Didn't get a chance to go onto the website.
Oh, good. Cool. I'm over here by yourself.
Yeah, thanks.
You got one?
Yeah, I have one. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Anyone else to address the board? Stephen? Okay. See you none? Yeah, Tom, we're going to move to executive session now? Or we're going to put that at the end? What are we doing on the final?
You can start that process. It's my understanding that the employee in question would prefer to have that in open session.
Can we do that now in open? That's not on the agenda as open?
Yes, because it's anticipated executive session, so...
Okay.
Our anticipation was in error, but it's still posted.
So we don't even need to make the motion then?
So we don't even make the motion? We're just going to move it down to... Okay. So is that...
Chairman, I think we should follow the agenda. I mean, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Yep.
There's a lot of things, but it won't take much time.
Yeah, absolutely. That's exactly what's going to go.
Okay, sounds good.
So, all right, so that was open? Okay, all right. So we'll move with number six for appointment ratification. I can have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Chuck Gaylord as Building and Grounds Assistant effective March 11, 2024 to June 30, 2024, pending a pre-employment physical.
For a second?
And just one amendment to that. He has a physical that he's taken within a year. And we've said that that would suffice if you provided that documentation.
Okay. Okay, great.
Okay. And why only till June 30?
So that we can reappoint him then on the annual schedule.
Sounds good.
Okay. So the motion is second. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Number seven, accept the grant for the Police Department program for disposing of prescription medications.
I don't know that there's anything in here for that. Unless it's buried. I can just go off the agenda. Yeah, I'll just go off the agenda. Is there a dollar amount associated with that grant?
I don't have that documentation, I'm sorry. I thought it had been included.
Okay, that's okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the grant for the Police Department program for disposing of prescription medications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Number eight, approve CRA's 47th Annual Dalton Road Race for Sunday, May 5, 2024. And we have a letter in the packet.
And we have the director of the CRA here to speak to it.
Sure.
So this is an annual event. This is actually a 47th annual mayday race. We hold it every year at Nessus Middle School. Letters have already been sent to the town, obviously, to the police, the fire, the EMTs. We're going to be doing the traditional races, a 10K, a 5K, a fun walk. And then we also have multiple kids' races. So Obstacles and Popsicles and Slatter Sprint. It's a really wonderful family event. You get hundreds and hundreds of people. Looking to get your approval.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 47th Annual Dalton Road Race on Sunday, May 5, 2024, as presented.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Any discussion? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind Alison, two years ago, I won my age division.
Wow.
I was the only one in that age division, but I won it. I just wanted to bring it up, and I will be ready again this year.
Okay.
Are you officially in my age division yet? Are you in that age division?
I think so.
Okay, I'll have to sign off that. We're in some competition. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Great, looking forward to the day.
Can I also make a plug for the Give Auction and Award Night?
Absolutely. Come on up. Yeah.
So every year, we recognize some community members that have been big volunteers and very helpful to the CRA and our community. And the event this year, it's the Give Kids, Auction and Award Night. It's Saturday, March 23rd. It's at the stationary factory. This year's the Give Kids, Award Hunter is Al P. Adams.
Okay.
So I couldn't even believe they hadn't already won it. We had to go back and look at the plaque. And somehow or another, they'd never been recognized before. So they're going to be recognized this year.
That's wonderful.
Hope everybody can make it out. We also have to take auctions that they find right before us.
Great. Excellent, thank you. Number nine, the Community Development Block Grant, additional Berkshire Regional Planning Commission program.
Yes, we have Patricia Mullins from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission with us on Zoom. This is, in some sense, a continuation of our current Community Development Block Program, but it would only be with Beckett. One of the attractive things about this extension is that we would not be the lead town, which has, you know, taken up some staff time and things like that. So I think Pat can describe what there is. I'm not sure you got... I think you got a letter of support as well. Unfortunately, we were unable to get that out to you on Thursday. But it would be great if you did decide to approve this, which I would recommend, that you also sign the letter of support. So Pat Mullins can talk more about it.
Hi, Pat.
Sure. I'm not sure if my colleague, Kristy Lewis, is in the room.
Come on up, Kristy.
I guess quite see back there. She's there somewhere.
Yep.
I don't have a chair.
So Kristy is going to... Since she's there in the room, she's going to speak to you firsthand, I believe.
Great.
Is she there?
Yeah, she's there.
Okay, all right. And I'm happy to answer any further questions once she's done.
The Berkshire Regional Planning Commission is pleased to be drafting the FY 24 CDBG grant for the towns of Beckett and Dalton. The grant will... We're going to request approximately $1 million to rehabilitate between 12 and 16 homes between the two towns. Much like the FY 20 Dalton CDBG grant, the application will focus on bringing funding and support of housing rehabilitation for low-to-matter-income homeowners to undertake deferred maintenance and make needed repairs on their homes. The FY 20 grant rehabilitated 10 homes in Dalton and seven in Beckett at the cost of over $1 million. The grant also provided funding to complete Dalton's ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. The CDBG Housing Program provides 0% deferred payment, forgivable loans up to $60,000 per unit in this grant for owner-occupied, low-to-matter-income households. The town of Beckett will be the lead this time around, and they'll assume all fiscal Dalton... All fiscal responsibilities for the grant. The grant must be submitted no later than March 25, 2024. Followed items are needed from you guys in advance of the deadline. There's an MOU, which allows BRPC to submit grant application on behalf of the towns and administer the grant if awarded. Beckett signed a similar MOU in early December. An interlokal agreement between Beckett, which names Beckett as a lead community and outlines the roles of each of the communities. Beckett has acted on and signed the interlokal agreement presented. Did you already give it to them?
Uh, no.
I actually did.
Well, I don't...
We've got the MOU, we've got the interlokal agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have the letter.
Yeah, yeah. The MOU was...
To Secretary of Attorney Augustus.
The letter was like, sorry.
And then a joint authorization form that will be uploaded, the grant application to be signed by the Dalton CEO. Beckett CEO will sign the application cover form. So all we really need from Dalton is these three forms. And Beckett has all the rest of the responsibilities.
So we have three different things to sign?
Yes.
Do we have...
Yeah, I get the... Yeah. Looks like we just need the chair on the seller document and then...
I think we have the MOU and the letter.
Yeah, we have the letter, the MOU, and the interlock agreement.
Oh, that's stable. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Sorry.
Yeah, so I think we have everything. So why don't we take the... Well, A, why don't we take a vote on approving the block grant application? Would that be appropriate? Okay. Can I get a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the CDBG grant application and the associated memorandum of understanding between the town of Dalton and the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and the town of Beckett.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Okay, actually, we got a text box we haven't joined us in. We should have done that a little while ago. And Alyssa, do you... Should I approve the interlocal agreement?
Yeah, sure. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement for multi-town participation in the FY 2024 Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Application between the towns of Beckett and Dalton, miss.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Alyssa? These are two documents I just signed. Original, so I can make a copy and give them... And then copy for a file, I guess.
You too?
Thanks.
Is that it on that?
And this one as well. Well, actually, I just put this in the packet.
Okay.
That's fine. We're good on that one. Okay? Thank you so much, and thank you for the great work. Appreciate it.
May I ask, did you sign the joint application authorization?
We signed the letter of support and then the interlock agreement and the memorandum.
So I'm looking for a letter of support. Could it come to you through one of our other colleagues at BRPC? What I'm looking for tonight, which is the MOU, we've got that checked off. The interlocal agreement, we have that checked off. There should also be a form there that is the joint authorization that requires the CEO's signature. Do you have that with you?
No. No, no.
It's right here. It was sandwiched in with the rest of them, so...
Okay.
But, yeah, you signed it.
Yeah, that actually... I have... That is something that has to be uploaded into the grant management system that just confirms that Dalton agrees to be part of this grant.
Excellent.
And then we'd be all set. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
And we hope to be able to bring you some... Well, good work over the next year or two.
That'll be wonderful. Thank you. All right, number 10, moving into the public hearing for the poll relocation request. We have to have a motion to move into public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, were we going to deal with the...
Let's do the public hearing first, and then we'll get into the other next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing for the poll relocation request for the Western Massachusetts Electric Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Okay, public hearing is open. Any questions?
Do we have a representative from Eversource here?
They were notified. I spoke with Eversource. She indicated that I could be here.
They answered.
Also, in your folders, I think there's only one request. There's two. So there's one for 170 Barton Hill Road and one for 126. And there's our folks here. So here's two, not one. I don't know which ones.
We're both done. Park, you go, Row?
Yes, they are.
Did you speak with Eversource or the president of the department?
Yes, I spoke with them. I also gave them some information.
So you said seven?
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's posted in the paper at 7:00?
It's posted in the paper. I had to send out postcards to the abutters, which many of them are here.
Okay.
Well, typically, it is Eversource that presents their request.
Yeah.
And I'm certainly not prepared to do...
Yeah, the petitioner would present their request, their proposal, and then the audience, the abutters, and interested parties would have a chance to comment. Without the petitioner present, I don't really see how we can proceed with a public hearing.
We should be able to hear from the residents, though.
We certainly can, but I don't know enough about... I mean, the application describes what's happening, but I wanted to hear in the words of the petitioner, but...
The application stands on its own without the petitioner present, right? The application stands on its own without the petitioner present?
Yes, I'm not sure. Have the abutters seen the petition?
We can also continue the public hearing, too.
We don't know if there's a poll or a...
It says poll relocation. We don't have any polls on our street.
Yeah.
It says sidewalks. There's no sidewalks. It says manual cover, where they can put manual cover in our lawn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the public hearing until such time that the petitioner can present their request to this board.
I'll second your motion, but just one thing. By not taking any action, does that automatically mean that we acquiesce to this request?
No.
Oh, wow. Wait a minute, let me finish. So we should be careful about that, even continuing the hearing. Perhaps we should force no and force western or not western Mass... Eversource to come back and define their initiative.
I don't agree with that. I'd rather continue the public hearing to give them an opportunity to present the petition so that...
Is there... Mr. Boyles?
We don't want them to present another petition request.
A public hearing is required. And if we have not concluded the public hearing, then I don't believe Eversource can move forward.
Did you second the motion?
Hey, you want to take any chances that the neighborhood be in the neighborhood? I'd rather vote it down than have to go back.
I agree.
I agree.
Yes. Can you postpone the hearing? Is that...
I don't think that's right here.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion to continue the public hearing. That means no action is taken until such time that we can conduct the public hearing in its entirety, so nothing will happen. I don't agree with voting no without listening to both sides, understanding what the petitioner is presenting, and listening to the abutters' concerns.
So this petition was dated on January 19, 2024. So we're now in March, but I would caution if we don't have a public... They still can't take any action, right? Without a public hearing, it may have been 60 days or 100 days or a year from now.
Well, it's a very formal process, and the public hearing is part of it. And even if they came, we could continue it till the next year.
Right, right, right.
You have 90 days to conduct the public hearing.
That would be for a poll hearing?
You have a 90-day process.
For a poll hearing.
For any public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Any further discussion?
When were we notified about the second part of this? Was it part of the initial?
It was part of the initial. I'm not sure if it was attached to Thursday's email or not, but I noticed in my folder I only had one.
Was it posted in the paper, the location for the...
It was posted that paper.
For both locations or this one?
Yes. And we received a postcard. Yes.
But we're confused as to, you know, poll relocation. There's no polls on our street.
Right.
And it's mentioned sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on our street.
How much does it currently cost for legal notifications that you posted?
This one costs $169.60, but I would be surprised if Eversource for it. So if it's continued, I assume we have to do another posting, which I will fill in for that as well.
I'd also like some clarification on what their intentions are. I mean, obviously, I'd like to have a prior meeting.
Dan, I don't think anybody seconded your motion. I will second your motion, but I plan to vote against it.
Let me ask a question.
Sure. Did I state your name and address? I forgot to say that before, so...
My name's Wayne Toney. I live at 126 Barton Hill Road. There's a reference on this document, a drawing. We already have a vault, and they're referencing putting a new vault. We already have a vault on our property. And the question is, if we saw this drawing and it was something like, we're going to just replace the existing vault with a new one, that might lean one way, and if it's no, we're going to dig up your yard and put another vault in it, we'd lean differently.
Sure.
So it would be very helpful to get a view of this drawing that they wrote.
Agreed, okay.
Yeah, who would this paper work out?
Okay, so we'll just... So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions from the board on the motion?
So we should set a date for the continuation of the public hearing.
We didn't vote it yet.
I understand that.
Or we should do that first.
Not one other question?
Is it possible that you send the drawing to 170 126?
Well, we don't even have the drawing in the packet, so we...
How many of us have you?
Yeah, so we don't have enough information to make a recommendation tonight, so... Okay, so motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just note that we'll have to set a date after the motion is either passed or not.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Bold.
Abstentions? Motion carries three to one. And let's go ahead and set a date for the hearing.
When's the next regular select board meeting?
Hold on. Now, you have to repost the meeting. How long do you have to...
Oh, right, so I have... It was between five and 15 days. I need to post it prior to the meeting.
Okay, so...
So, maybe April.
April.
Yeah.
What's the first meeting in April? Is it the 8th? If we can confirm that.
Yes, April 8th.
That's... One, two, three. That's four weeks from today.
Plenty of time.
Enough time to repost.
I'm not sure if I'm... They're going to have to re-second the postcards?
Yes.
I'll give them a call tomorrow.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Receive postcards again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for whoever's involved or interested in this topic for joining us tonight. And sorry for the delay. Welcome to... Welcome to government.
Thank you.
We'll see you back on the 8th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the folks on Barton Hill, thank you for taking care of Nala once she gets out of my house. She runs up to your street, so... Okay, why don't we go ahead to the open session for what we had anticipated for executive session? And this is to discuss a complaint against a town employee. And the town employee has opted for an open session discussion, so...
Bob Bishop, I signed up to meet.
Okay.
Hello.
And Bob?
Hi.
Bob is with us, but he's gonna... He's going to sustain from this conversation because he's in the way of the stationer.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah?
I'll log off, and you can let me know when it's over.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
Okay. All right, so everybody should have a copy of the complaint letters in a packet. And then there's a letter of support for Agnes's. And this letter of support is from... Is this one from Jane? Yeah, Jane Smith.
Mr. Chairman, before we delve too deep into this, I'd like to make a recommendation that we refer this to the town manager, being that it's a personnel issue. And I believe that that should be the first step in this whole process.
Okay.
Mark, I tried to say, Mark, I agree with you completely, but I think we should include the Board of Health in your motion.
Perfect.
He's not making a motion yet.
Yeah, you let him talk.
I think we give the town manager an opportunity to look into this. And as Mr. Boyle said, we'll refer to the Board of Health also, these complaints. He is the town manager. We hear often about the Town Manager Act. He's in charge of personnel, so I think that this... That would be the first initial step in any of this. I feel like we would be the final determination, and I think we're skipping a major step here, which is not fair to Agnes. I mean, in the form of a motion.
Okay, is your second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is second to refer this matter to the town manager. Any further discussion?
Did your motion include referring to the town manager and the Board of Health?
Yes. Motion is amended second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I just reapologize for dragging you down here this evening.
I had other budgets of other people, too, but I'll ask them to the town manager.
No, we're not making a board issue.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into FY '25 budgets.
I believe all of these budgets and covers are present. Except I will be presenting on the amendment to the snow and ice budget.
Sorry, Tom, are you... Wait, I'm speaking.
Can you repeat that for me? Oh, I believe everyone is here who is going to speak to...
I wish we could turn the lights on in the back here, so I can see.
I know. Clap. You guys clap back there. It'll turn on. There you go.
Hey! Let there be light. Hey!
So, the first one, the...
Building maintenance and town hall.
Yeah, so 192.
493, Joe.
We go 192 for Jeff.
Hello.
It's your first board hearing, Jeff, huh?
It is.
Yeah. We're pretty easy.
When is it customary to kiss the ring?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
No, it's important to understand that we don't approve budgets.
Kiss the ring is at the town meeting.
The voters approve the budget.
Yeah.
We offer what's called a tentative approval. It's a customary procedure.
Yeah, go on, go on, Mark.
Good, getting settled and filing.
So, not much of a change, except for just the dumpster fees going up, right?
Yeah, it's standard kind of angle increase.
Yeah.
TA.
Yeah, TA.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have an office?
I do.
Where is it?
In the basement. I want to be fine.
I like a man that thinks like that. Thank you.
Might be by the old jail cell.
Thank you.
The only reason why I thought is when I look at the kennels down in the basement for the...
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for that great work.
You're done?
No, we have a town hall.
Yep.
If I can introduce the first bit, this is also where the contingency funds come from. So, that's... Because that deals with town hall employees, it was originally placed into this budget, and those are the salaries that are represented. There's a rise in it because of the increased use of contingency funds. We did have to go to the Finance Committee and get a reserve fund transfer in anticipation of going over. So, we have raised that line of $1,500.
Okay.
Sorry, $25,000.
Yep, okay. Now, the expenses, electricity and fuel seem to be the same, but those costs typically going up. Is that... We're good there?
Yeah, we're good there. We had a... We were running off surplus.
Oh, we were, okay.
For a while, which we finally just, like, the last month, it just kind of ran out. So, I don't anticipate any changes there.
Okay, TA?
Yeah.
TA.
TA, okay. And then I think that's it for you, Jeff, all right? There's only two?
Yep.
All right, and thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
And then we have town accountants, 135 for Sandra.
Hi, Sandy. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
How are you all?
Good. How are you?
Great.
You're not on Zoom?
No, I'm not.
It's good to see you.
Bye.
So, this budget's pretty straightforward. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Do we have anything that is coming out? Tom, I guess the question is to you, the... I don't want to call it odd, but that consultative report that the state did, is there any recommendations there that's going to have a cost or an expense for our accounting department, whether it be software or anything else of that nature?
When I receive it, you will hear about it right away.
Okay, so we haven't received it yet. Okay, all right.
No, I've asked a couple of times. And of course, DOR is now in a busy season for them.
Oh, sure.
It's the same people who work on helping towns through their budget process.
Yeah.
And free cash and all of that.
Okay, yeah, okay, just curious, okay. Any questions?
Oh, yes, so am I.
Yeah.
Great budget, decrease overall.
I know. Isn't that great?
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. TA?
TA.
Hey, a few questions. How much do we have in free cash right now? I mean, off the top of your head, round figure.
Free cash has not been certified.
Okay.
I plan to submit that this week. Off the top of my head, I really hate to like...
No, no, I thought it'd been certified. It's about 20 bucks. Yeah.
It's going to be probably as much as it was last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Sandy, did you run into vocational education, sir?
Oh.
I'll do those.
Okay.
Tom.
Yeah, if there's questions for me.
Yeah.
I...
This is my first time doing the streetlights budget.
Yeah.
What number is it?
424, streetlights.
Streetlights.
The next one on your list should be 424.
I got sewer treatment.
It may be stuck the... Mine was stuck to the other page.
Should be right after the account.
What number, Joe?
It's 424. It may have been stuck with the one we just went through. Mine was stuck. Yeah, there you go.
All right, great.
In this one, the street lighting expense is estimated to go up. It's... You can see the actuals that we've done, and the... The total of that is offset by the Rockwood net metering program that we're part of. And when Sandy and I went over this, we were looking at actual expenses, and it varies considerably. But we thought, for instance, FY '24 voted budget was for streetlights, 27,460, which includes probably the additional amount we needed last year. So, we've raised that to 28,800 as a safe figure.
Hey, Tom, on the other lights down here, East Susie Town Street went from 420 to 4,332. For East Susie Town Street blinking light.
I think that's a typo. Is that a typo?
That's a typo. It's not in the copy that I have.
Yeah, mine either.
Oh.
There's an extra 3.
There's an extra 4.
Oh, there's an extra...
Oh, it's supposed to be 332?
Yeah.
Oh, that, oh.
Well, maybe it was supposed to be 433 in that...
And there's an extra 2.
I think it's supposed to be 430.
And you have the correct figure?
Maybe same.
Because I think on this sheet, it's jacking up the numbers.
Yeah, so maybe revise and bring back? Or TA with the revision?
Yeah, if you can TA with 433 instead of 420, my apologies for that. Yeah.
It should be 433.
That's why we go through the process, right? So, it's all good.
That'll... Yeah, thank you.
Yep, it should be 433.
Many ayes.
Okay, so TA with the adjustment?
Yes, with the adjustment.
449 wastewater? Or are we... Yeah, 449 sewer treatment, sorry.
Yes, this one, we did finally get an estimate from Pittsfield, and it was pretty high. Not quite as high as Sandy and I had originally thought it might be, but it came... The intergovernmental sewer agreement from Pittsfield rose from what we budgeted last year was $1,300,000. You know, we had to add a little over $70,000 to that. And so, it rose from effectively $1,370,000 to $1,519,000 as an estimate for next year. And of course, that is just an estimate. So, there may be adjustments to make as well. I don't imagine they'll be as much as they were this past year. And of course, that's the major rise. Everything else stays the same. Slight increase in the recording secretary budget for an overall change, unfortunately, of 16.48%. That's... And we did include the FY '24 actual, 1,378,53.
Yep.
Obviously, a large increase. You know, they are phasing in over three years the amount that they've had to invest in their sewer treatment. Because DEP came down hard on them.
But their estimates are getting a little bit better then, right?
Yes.
For budgetary purposes?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a good thing.
I'll know in five years, the total amount has almost doubled.
Yes.
That's significant. So, is it just going to keep snowballing?
Well, they walked into their...
They're hatching out where they are to be.
No, that's not accurate, because now the feds, the EPA, is giving... This was in the Eagle Eye. People don't read it. It's a good reason why you shouldn't read it.
I read that article.
Yeah, but Pittsfield never complied with the amount of... Is it phosphorus, Dan? Phosphorus in the discharge into the river. And now they want them to comply with that issue. I didn't get any of the amount, but whatever, it's just going to cost them and pass on us. So, this is going to go down.
Right. They also got required by the Department of Revenue to charge Dalton differently. We had been getting quite a break over the years, and they were taking that out of their more... Sort of the free cash of the sewer system. And they had no money left to do that, and DOR said, no, you have to pay the full amount. So, a combination of that.
Yes, so it's not going to go down.
Mr. Shroo is going to comment, too, so...
I was just going to tell Dan, they got hit with a major bill for upgrades and stuff like that. Obviously, it circles down, so...
Yeah, for sure.
And when did that come out?
It went in the last 10 days. It was just a small article about the EPA or in Pittsfield, because they had delayed for 10 years about the phosphorus in the water that they discharged in the river, and they have to comply and deal with that issue and correct it.
So, that cost may not be included in this estimate?
No, no.
Any changes that come down the road that...
Well, it's in the future. Yeah, it's not going to go down.
Oh, it's certainly not going to go down.
Okay, TA.
TA, TA?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you for that one, Tom. 320 vocational education?
Yeah, Sandy prepared this. We did get figures. You know, we often get figures of a high number of students at this time, because the number of students say, well, maybe I'll try vote again next year. We don't actually know the figures until September, which is, of course, far too late to include them in the budget unless we have a special town meeting. And if the cost came down as much as it might, it could come down $100,000. That could be worth having a special town meeting in late September to lower... To take that off and lower the tax rate.
Yeah, sure.
Lower the budget.
Yep.
You know, is what I mean. And so, we now have an estimate of five people going to Taconic, four people going to McCann, 14 going to Smith's Book. And that's a lot of people. And, you know, it was 25 when we started working on it, and by the time we finished, it was down to 23. So, it may shrink even further.
Well, one of the problems, Tom, is that you have to commit. The students have to commit by a certain date.
Yes.
And it's early in the spring, I think April 1st. So, a lot of them commit without really firming up their plans. But they don't want to miss out on the deadline, and then they don't go.
Yeah, they spend additional. They hold their spot, right, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a pretty stiff law.
Traditionally, I had a lot of money left over in that budget. Yeah, good idea.
But it may not end up being that much, but that's how much we have to budget for at this point.
Yes, we're going to... TA?
TA.
Mark, TA?
TA.
Bob, you good so far? Any questions? Sorry.
I'm good. Nope, I'm listening. I'm good.
Okay.
How's the weather down there, Bob?
Ah, fantastic.
Yeah, stay out of the sun.
146 Collector? Melissa, there you go. Hello, how are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Good, good.
Hello.
Yes. Paywall increases for obvious reasons. I was able to cut a few things in the rest of the budget, so the overall increase is only 1.79%.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Outstanding.
Excellent.
Yeah?
That's good.
Good.
TA?
Yes.
There's a one-time...
Yeah, that's why it's so low, because that was that one-time fee we had last year, the $5,000 to set it up.
Yep.
So, that won't come back.
That's good.
Okay.
And of course, software costs are increasing every year, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
TA?
TA.
Thank you, Melissa.
And then postage.
Yeah, more.
And the most of all, yeah.
Yeah, so postage, I did ask for a $400 increase. The cost of postage has gone up. And we do have more people licensing their dog by mail, and then, of course, there's the new state vote by mail, although the clerk works diligently to get me reimbursement on that.
Yeah.
And a lot, you know, a lot more things are going on certified now.
Sure.
Things like that. And our lease was up, so there is an increase from the $2136 to $2,400. But that will stay till 2027.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions come forward? TA?
TA.
TA.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
And then, one forty-five treasure. Don?
Hello, Don.
Hey, Don.
Hello, Don.
Okay, I'm gonna start with one forty-five.
Okay.
Our salary has increased to about three point seven five. I tried to shave some money off of anywhere I thought that I could do that, to try and help with things. The budget's still increased, but it's not that much.
We got some required items that kind of jump in, like OPAP jumps in as a requirement, so things that you can't really control, right?
Yep, the OPAP is every other year, have no control, like you said.
Yep. Okay, any questions?
Good balancing on the expenses.
Yeah, one question, Don. You're responsible for getting or procuring insurance for the town property, right? Because the town will no longer, hopefully, if your fingers crossed, the bar on property on March twentieth. Could we expect any decrease in our liability policy?
I'm not sure that, maybe it's, I would have to, I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
If there's any chance.
All right, great question, Ms. Paul.
Thank you.
All right, TA? Number one forty-five?
TA, thank you.
Mark, you good? Bobby, good?
Good.
Debt excluded, seven-ten is it?
Yep, so the loans that are already, I've already secured, have dates after them. So if there's a project down there without a date, that's what I'll be borrowing for this June. What we do is we take what we think our expenses are gonna be, and we divide that out into the five-year state house loan notes. And I come up with a principal and an interest. I went with seven percent interest. The financial advisor said six or seven would work. I figured it would be better to be safe, just seven percent.
Okay, any questions? TA?
TA.
All right, how'd you get that? And then, nine fourteen for group health?
Do you wanna finish the seven-ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I thought we're just kinda going, okay, sorry, Don.
There's more pages.
Yep.
There's a seven-ten, like the capital projects, and then there's a seven-ten sewer and drains.
Okay.
Where do you find it?
Yep.
So these are loans, the things without a date after them, are things I'm going to be borrowing this June. It's based on, those are costs that I know already. For example, the loader, I know, is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. The cruiser, the sidewalk repair, the town hall data wiring. So I just took those and divided them by five for principal payments, and figured out the interest was seven percent.
Okay. So these are all under seven-ten, they're not separate with the maturing?
They're all under seven-ten.
Yep, so TA for matured debt and interest?
Yes.
And then we have the sewers and drains.
So it's a seven-ten cap. Sewer and drain, seven-ten?
So those are loans, and I don't have anything to borrow for this year on that, so.
Okay.
Went down. It's been paid off that one.
TA?
Yep.
TA.
And now, group health? Nine eleven? I'm missing something here then.
Retirement?
Nope, nope.
Nine eleven.
There was gone a couple of things down. Here it is, retirement. Okay.
So they're changing the way they're going to assess us. It's gonna phase in over three years. It's caused a fairly large increase this coming year. It should hopefully start to go down in the next coming years.
Okay.
No guarantee though. I mean, it should go down, but they also had projected that we were only gonna increase seven percent in the one on fourteen, so.
Don, this is all, this is based on wages, so wages go up, this correspondingly moves up too.
Yeah, but it's also because the way they're figuring it out too, so. It's taking into active disabilities and retirees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, fourteen point seven percent, John. That's good. Not any controlling, so that is what it's.
TA? TA.
So over the past few budgets, that's up two hundred thousand dollars.
Over the past couple of years?
Over the past couple, few budgets.
Few budgets?
With the, with the debt and with the seven-ten's and this.
Yeah.
It's really, these are these external costs that I.
Right.
Haven't done before, and it's really tough on the budget.
That may be an interesting slide, is like, if we look at the budget total and what is the external pressures coming at us, we have no control. But what's that number percentage of the budget?
Well, I did that with the dollar rise.
Right.
And it showed it was about seventy percent.
That's right, yeah.
Thirty percent in.
Internal, yeah, that's right. Okay. Uh, nine fourteen for group health?
So our health insurance went up ninety point nine five percent. Our demo went up one point oh six percent. I only put in for four additional open, for open enrollment this year. I had six last year, I used them all. We have had some changes recently. We have learned a couple of resignations. One was on the insurance, so that'll be okay. The other one was not, so if that position is replaced, we lose one of those four already. So I'm hoping they're gonna be okay with this.
So did I hear you correctly, you have six open enrollments?
I did last year.
And now, why do we?
No, six, six slots for an enrollment. That is, our open enrollment allows people to change from their spouses to theirs if they would like.
Oh, six spots, not six times in a year?
No.
Okay, all right, so you kinda calculate. Okay.
One for the retirees, the men, and then one for the active retirees.
All right, so you just, it's talking four or six spots of open enrollment, estimating that cost.
Because the costs are based on total enrollees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I tried to lower the additional open enrollments to try and help.
Sure, okay. Makes sense, thank you, Don. Any questions? TA?
TA.
Life insurance?
Life insurance is, they've agreed to guarantee the rate for one more year, so pretty much that's the same.
Okay. TA?
Yeah.
Medicare town share?
I increased that another four thousand like I did last year, because we're on track this year to come very close to that fifty thousand, so.
TA?
TA, yeah.
Fringe benefits?
The fringe benefits, the only change that I made was I upped the vacation payout, because it seems like a lot of employees lately have opted to prepaid out for their vacation instead of push it forward. So I upped that some.
TA?
TA.
Town insurance?
This is another one out of my control. I underbudgeted last year, because I did what they recommended and came in higher. Luckily, I had extra in my workman's comp, so it absorbed it. So this has increased.
Okay.
You see, I should've saved my questions till here. This is the, or look.
Yeah.
Yeah, property liability insurance comes in.
Yeah.
I mean, it might go down a little bit, it's a hundred and fifty acres, but it's just basically useless land.
Yeah, so it might be, you know.
It might be five dollars or something.
Discounts and prepaid credits, the prepaid credits are definitely to an app percent, and we always take advantage of that.
Yeah.
The discounts, I never know what I'm gonna get.
Okay.
You can't count on it, and you don't know what you're gonna get, and you just have to, you know, hope it's good. It's based on people doing training, Zoom meetings, things like that, so.
Uh, when you say that's based on employees doing that to get a lower.
Staff.
Yeah, so get a lower liability rate if they get.
No, that's, well, yeah, that's, they give us credits for doing things, training and stuff, and it reflects at the, you know, at the beginning of the new year, they'll give us credits towards, towards this.
Like, if one employee gets, like, if you think like a webinar is an hour, right, and they're, they're hourly rate, like, what's the credit? Is it worth it in the long run or?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, but it all adds up.
Sure.
Communication, you know.
Sure.
It all helps.
Okay.
I just never know who's done what, so I have no idea what's coming.
Right, right.
I'm gonna go to the MMA conference. I always take three Mya workshops.
Yep.
Quick season.
Yeah, I'm getting really more interested, because I'm on the Personnel Committee now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so for MMA, so trying to watch that, so, yeah. Okay.
TA?
TA?
TA. Thank you, Don.
Don, thank you, as always.
I think I just pointed something out.
Mr. Oil, yeah.
Yes, the DRA, the dog we developed in the store, he was, I'm a member of, has liability insurance. The DRA, to its own funds that we accumulated along the way, paid for our own insurance. They're by saving the town three or four thousand dollars. Right, Don?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, veteran benefits, Alyssa?
Uh, this is my first time doing veterans benefits. I worked with Sandy a little bit on this. I tried reaching out to her, nor them, but I'm not getting responses from them. So between Sandy and I, it's what we came up with.
Okay. Any questions from the board? TA?
TA.
TA, thank you, Alyssa. Uh, snow and ice?
The veteran benefit, but it's, it's revised by the state.
Yeah, for snow and ice, this is revised based on the revised contract with the DPW superintendent for getting overtime for snow and ice.
Okay.
Or.
TA?
Yep.
TA.
Okay. And then we have.
There was a, there was a revision to the Police Department. Equipment cruiser maintenance, it's two-ten fifty-two forty-three. Looking at the historical record and recognizing that there has been substantial need for equipment repair and maintenance over the past two years, but that now there's a newer fleet. The Finance Committee thought twenty thousand dollars would be more than sufficient and indicated its willingness, of course, to transfer any additional money that would be needed.
Did that go back to the chief?
Yes.
And she approved it?
She didn't oppose it.
Well, look at the history.
I will say she wasn't thrilled about it, but didn't wanna take it up as an issue.
Well, if you look at the history, we haven't spent that much in the past.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's one of those things, if they need to come back for the money, they'll just come back for the money, because it's something, if there's a cruiser issue, they're gonna have to get it fixed.
Absolutely.
I only ask the question because I wanna make sure our department heads, whenever their budgets are adjusted, are included in the conversation and agree with or disagree with the adjustment, that's really, that's really it. So it sounds like she's not pleased, but it's okay.
Yeah.
TA?
Was that the only change from the Finance Committee, was that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, TA?
That's all I got at all.
Want to decrease them?
Uh, on the agenda says CPRSD for three-ten, but I don't see it in the packet.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, sorry, that was just carried over, kind of pro forma, their meeting is on Thursday evening.
Okay, so table three-ten CPRSD to our next meeting then, or?
Yeah. Which, depending on your desires, could be in one week. I did, in the schedule, have a potential meeting for next Monday.
Yeah, we wanna just come in for just one thing, though.
Well, no, but, you know, it would also be to approve the warrant.
Oh, okay.
So that would, that would be the main purpose, but.
Okay.
What's the deadline to approve the warrant?
Well, for me, the, you're the better, you know, and it's not like there are, there are, there's money, there are particular dollar amounts attached to it at that point. It's just what's going to go on and what isn't. And right now, there are only a couple of potential changes. One of them being highway paper.
Okay. Well, we have it on the, we have it on the calendar for a hold, so let us know what you wanna do and figure that out.
Yeah, I'll confer with you and Dan on that.
Okay. All right. Overall budget review, Ms. Richardson?
Yeah, actually, we have a couple, the building inspector and animal control revisions as well. The Finance Committee proposed to the building inspector a reduction of seven hundred dollars. They actually negotiated it during the meeting, and he was okay with that. So that budget has come down by seven hundred.
Okay.
Is there any way we can prove, yeah, right now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I.
Okay, well, we don't have it in front of us, though.
It had been TA.
No, it's, it's in the packet with the Police Department, had a clip line potentially there, John.
It had been TA, went to the Finance Committee, and it's now coming back with it.
Okay.
So what's the adjustment, Building Department?
It's down seven hundred dollars in expenses, which was negotiated with the building inspector during the meeting.
But do we have the?
So he's fine with that.
TA, the revised figure?
I think it's a good idea, just.
TA?
TA.
Yeah, thank you.
Animal control was adjusted, right?
And there, there was just an error in the pay rate for FY twenty, it was for FY twenty-five. The pay rate did not match grade six stem three, so we've revised that.
TA?
Okay.
Yeah.
TA.
Okay. Uh, all right, now overall budget review.
There's that. Uh, there is one item that is not in this money article sheet, which is, oh, I'm sorry, it is in there now. I did revise it, I included the sidewalk paper in there.
Don't take it out yet.
Yeah, as you, as you heard, there will be a, a citizen's petition to have sidewalks filled with concrete. We do have some sidewalks now that are blacktop, relevant areas.
The other part of this is, he also said it can be used for using bigger, bigger patching on the road.
Yes.
So that's the other part of that thing, it wasn't just for sidewalks, it was for other holes in the, in the streets, like, it would be more useful.
Question, I would ask, if we weren't doing sidewalks with that machine and was only for patching, do we really need to spend that amount of money so we can do road patching? I don't know, just the question I would ask. Obviously, if we're doing sidewalks and road repair, certainly makes sense. But if we're not doing sidewalks, if the citizens petition and the bylaw changes, if it's successful, then we're not gonna. I don't see the reason to spend that kind of money without further consideration.
And I do have that question in to the DPW superintendent. I've not yet gotten an answer for that.
That would just be my concern, is do we really need to spend the money if it's just for patching of the road? I don't know. Let's see what the DPW superintendent has to say.
Yeah.
About the value of that equipment being used just for one purpose.
This, I think, might be another good reason to have that interim meeting.
Ah, yeah.
To clear up any sort of nuisance.
For sure.
Which is why if there is.
Refresh my memory, what's the, what's the number on that?
The amount?
Yeah.
It's.
Sixty-four six.
Here somewhere.
Yeah, sixty-four, six hundred. Okay, the third one down.
All right.
It's sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars for sidewalk paper. So a procedural question, if the bylaw change were to be approved.
We wouldn't have to spend the money. Yeah, you know, you can authorize it as.
So the, the issue's gonna come up to, the question's gonna come up to.
But if it helps, it could go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, residents want sidewalk repairs, we only budgeted ten thousand dollars. We didn't, we didn't make much progress on that. So the initial cost of concrete is gonna be higher, the, the life of it is longer, so over time, it's cheaper. So it's gonna be a matter of how. So it's gonna be a matter of how, how quickly do we want to repair sidewalks within town?
And Bud is working on some numbers for, an estimate for, say, replacing concrete sidewalks between, you know, we've always talked between the senior center and Heinz Park as being the area that we would, you know, think about as the initial phase of sidewalk renovation. Now, of course, as pointed out before, not all of that necessarily needs to be replaced, sometimes it's just one broken section. But he did, he did recall that in doing High Street, when that was redone, which of course is a long stretch of sidewalk, it was $300,000. We, of course, have to, the amount that was, that they were able to do, that the DPW was able to do here on Field Street last year was what he felt that they could do during the summer in the midst of their other activities. So we would have to hire out, and of course, that means prevailing wage as well. So the, comparing the High Street project, which we hired out, would probably be a good way to think about repairing lengths.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it's not necessarily all lengths, but it would be hiring out.
I think whatever the cost of High Street was, 300,000, that's approximately a mile long, or at least, in today's prices in the tacky market, it'd probably be doubled, be 600,000. So it's not really a fair comparison.
But Bud thought five, maybe.
Maybe five, as a date.
But not three.
Somebody to do it. But I would just say two things about the equipment. If we're gonna change the criteria of sidewalks, it's not necessary to have a piece of equipment like that anymore, perhaps the Superintendent could rent one and need the new basics.
Let's cross this bridge when we get there, so we have the warrant article, we get the citizen's petition up front, and then if that passes, then we make an adjustment to the budget and not, not on the paper. So we'll just take that out of budget and.
And we could use some money in for a potential revenue.
Right.
Yeah. Deal.
Yeah. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So that's, that's the major change to that section. I have, oh, we're gonna cover something else a little bit later. I do have a recent calculation of the budget, the overall budget.
Yeah.
Again, it's, it's sort of highly sensitive to the Central Berkshire budget, when that comes in. For every, right now, we're, the estimate from the first budget that Central Berkshire put out is that their operating budget is going to go up 3.44%. For every tenth of a percent that comes down to 3.34, 3.24, 3.14, our budget goes down $10,000. And that fit, that dollar change in the levy limit at the very bottom comes down $10,000. So if it came down a full percent to 2.4%, that would come down $100,000.
In our assessment.
I'm sorry?
In our assessment.
Yes.
The, yeah, if our assessment came down.
So school's operating budget came down 1%. Our assessment as Dalton would come down $100,000.
If it went down 1%.
Yeah.
That's approximate.
Yeah, of course. So what's the bottom line now, here, right?
Over, under?
Yeah.
Well, so the, on the topic page by the total Dalton budget, the percent change would be slated to go up 6.8%. Remember, last year was 10.1%.
Yeah.
So it's.
Made some progress in shrinking that percent increase.
It's a good direction.
Yes.
And again, mostly not driven internally.
Look, what's the share of external? You had that broken out?
Yeah, it's about 70%.
Of that.
External, and 30% internal, again, at roughest.
I mean, business, what's external mean, the school?
It includes education, insurance, and debt.
So things we really don't have control over, right?
Yeah, but there's other things we don't have control over either.
Sure.
Medical insurance.
That's internal, yeah. So all insurance is all education and all debt.
And the school, total operating budget.
Yeah.
Our portion.
Okay.
Special money articles, though, that's up significantly, yeah?
But yeah, and they're paid for entirely by free cash, so no impact whatever on the taxes.
Tax rate, yeah. But we certainly, we could reduce that or.
Yeah, we could reduce it.
We allocate it.
Well, yeah, it's a question of what the priorities of the board are, and, you know, these are the items that have come to me.
Yeah.
And.
I understand.
Can I, can I ask you a question, just to Sandy, real quick? And I had this question before when we were going through about funding these projects through cap, or free cash, and I'm glad she's here tonight. Sandy, I just want your opinion, because I mean, I know you've been doing this for a long, a long time. What's your opinion on funding some of the, funding the stuff through free cash?
My opinion is that we should decide how much free cash we're gonna use on a regular basis, and not just because we have free cash funded with capital projects. I really feel like we should have a plan for capital projects that's five years, and everybody submits everything they want, and some wait for a couple of years and some are necessary right away. And that's not happening right now. It seems like whoever wants something puts it forward in there and it gets funded, and either gets funded through capital stabilization or free cash. And I think we, you know, our free cash is gonna stay up there. If we close and tighten our budgets, which was what we're doing, the Finance Committee wants to do, that's gonna take away from a free cash. And if we spend it on all the projects and don't have a five-year plan where that gets kind of like evened out over five years, we may be in a position of less free cash. That's my position on it.
Yeah, number 16, saying we do a priority capital projects to your point, because we've been asking multiple towns for a three to five-year plan on that, exactly kind of looking at how we spread that out over time.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we've got, we had some very old DPW equipment, and we've done a really good job these last two, three years replacing that. So it's time to maybe wait a little while for other wish list kind of things, you know, so, in all departments, I would say.
I agree.
We're having a unfortunate issue with computers where we have to upgrade to Windows 11, and some of our computers, some of our computers were bought later on, where I think the upgrade automatically happens, but other computers are not like that. Ours, ours in the accounting system, for one, but we were, we got new computers earlier on than everybody else, and I think that that kind of upgrade to Windows 11 being free wasn't around then. So I just think we do have to have some kind of five-year plan. Everybody chips into it and says what they need, and it has to get ranked, I think, or what you need it right away, because it's broken and needs to get fixed, or what's, you know, a wish of something new, so.
Thank you.
Todd, I gotta go with a quick question. I said before, or hopefully, on March 20th, we will close on a deal to sell the Biden property. If that happens, we will have a sum of $150,000 available. Is that correct?
It won't be immediately available, it'll go into the general fund and will happily be appropriated from that.
Second part of that question is, the planning board, in its wisdom, and I supported it, made it a condition of the special permit, the issue to, and I forget the name of the company, to build the solar array over on the Warren property, that the Warren's back taxes be paid in full, which is over $300,000. Is there anything, any updates on that?
Yes, there is progress on that, they're working with the assessors currently on that. I expect that to move forward as planned.
Why would the assessors be, have anything to do with them paying us the money?
The assessors have to do some calculations.
Okay.
Roughly, as part of that process, yeah.
But just an overview, you indicated before a building permit will be issued for that project.
Yes.
They will pay us.
Yes, in cash. Yes, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna trade.
Thank you for the update, then.
Any other questions on the budget?
I did have a question about the new Ford F-550. Now, I know.
At which department?
This is other transfers, I think it's for the Highway Department, DPW, but.
Yes.
I understand there's potentially substantial repairs, but I was wondering, it looked like it was still another year before its scheduled replacement, that's $163,000, $164,000. I'm just wondering, are the repairs substantial enough that we go and camp wait another year for that, or? That would be one question, and then the other would be obviously the paper, I think that that's kind of up in the air. And then $25,000 for potential skate park design and engineering, I would say that might be premature as well, just considering it hasn't really been any planning around that. That's $253,000 right there. I think a lot of the other items on here, some of them are very necessary, and I don't know that there's much discretion on some of these, but $250,000 is significant.
Well, I'll have, certainly have Bud come in, if we have a meeting Monday or the following Monday, and talk about that. Happy to take the skate park off if it took you, as you know, something we were considering.
We haven't, we haven't decided yet, the skate park part of our.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, the skate park's part of our master plan. It's in there, isn't it? Part of open space recreation?
We're working with Open Space and Recreation as, as part of their.
No, wasn't it in our master plan from 2016? And then we had residents come, we had residents come to us and ask us to support skate parks, or rather than just checking it off the list. I do think we need to step back and look at the whole list in totality and make a decision on it before we get to town meeting, so probably we do this next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that one week from now.
It might be in the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which will sort of condense into a chapter in the master plan, so it may not appear in the master plan, but it may be in the Open Space and Recreation Plan that that was taken from.
Right.
And I'm not saying we should never spend the money, I'm just saying, is it the right time this year?
Well, and, you know, depending on, on what we end up with, putting more money in the, in the stabilization funds, open, maybe even the pension fund at some point, that, that's all great investments.
And then we have like, we still have a hundred dollars sitting there for about a hundred and some odd thousand, plus the 44 that should get returned from the fire department by April 1st.
Yep.
Right? So we got about a hundred?
I think so. Oh, we'll have about $150, probably.
Right. So we still got a fund there that we need to bring through.
Yeah, and that needs to be contracted forward by December 30th.
Right.
Okay.
So even when some of the things are already, it might fall into that bucket.
Yeah, we might be able to buy the pickup truck for the Highway Department with that money, but I don't know about the same price.
Again, I'm always gonna favor spending it on interest rates.
So, so why don't we, may propose that the board agrees and the calendars allow, you already have it on the calendar for next Monday, why don't we do anything left over in the budget, TA, and then we can kind of do a detailed review of our priorities?
Yeah.
That day, too. And then residents can come and we can publish the list, and they can voice their opinions on different items, too, and just have a discussion, and we can set it for, let's not be here all night, but maybe like 90 minutes, right?
Yeah, and that's fantastic, because these items are delineated in the warrant.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Is it okay with you, Mark?
Yep.
Sure. Okay. Bob, you good for next Monday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right. Do we want to do the draft warrant now, or do we want to do that just Monday?
I just wanted to point out a couple of things, if I could, one of them was that Article 17, which is for the first time, putting all of the money articles into one, one number, so that people who are concerned with that, and if somebody wants to pull something out, they can, just like any other article, but it's.
We want to list the actual estimated cost of each?
I will have those in the motions and explanations, and we can publicize that as early as we have them. But, you know, we do, we do have estimates in these, in that, in the previous document. Some of those are not final, so.
Okay, yeah. But they'll be listed somewhere.
Yeah, and, and they are on this document, so that's.
Right, but for the public, not for us? Because that document, that document.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, we can, we can post all these things on the, on the web early, too, see who's interested in that.
Well, what I'm getting to is that the public brings a motions and explanations, and they bring the warrant.
Yeah.
One of those two documents should have the price, though.
Oh, absolutely, the motions, all those.
Right.
Yeah.
You guys have any questions on that?
And then, again.
We talked about this earlier, but I think a particular interest to the board, the potential payments to a, they're both on WHO the Tag and EASU the Tag Street.
Oh, that's coming up.
Yeah, businesses, like I might have discussed.
That's, that's later on the agenda.
Tonight?
Yep.
Oh, I thought we'd, next week, okay.
So on this warrant, Article 22 is now not going to be taken up, the paid or not received for reducing the speed limit on Headwicks or Sunset. The other citizen petition, one Todd brought forward, is the only citizen petition that we have for this warrant.
Okay.
So that's, and then I have, I have the language under Article 21, that's the entire amended agreement with the Central Berkshire Research School.
Okay.
So I have that, I have the text for that to insert.
Okay.
It just, it's not just four pages, it's gonna add another, you know, seven pages or something like that. So that's, this is practically a final warrant now, so I'd urge you to, to look at it. Also, on Article 15, I don't yet have the numbers for what we've received so far in the opioid trust fund. What I anticipate happening there is we'll, we'll move over what we have, figures that we have at the time, and between the time we publish the figures for the motions and explanations, and the time we vote on it, we'll gain a small amount of interest. Once we move the money out of there, it'll take one cleanup vote to move that interest in as well, so it, it won't be completely finished, but at least that'll give us a, a place to put the money right now, we've just been putting it into the general fund. Some towns opted to create a stabilization fund for it, but now the state has allowed an opioid remediation fund to be created. This is the, you know, proposed language for that. And I will also pass this, the, for the land items, there are already the articles that have been approved by Town Council, but Town Council hasn't seen the warrant as a whole, but I don't anticipate much trouble with the rest of it.
I'd like to make one recommendation, if we can take that Article 23, or any citizen petition for that matter, move to the front of the warrant.
Could influence how the money articles are voted on in Article 17, particularly with the paper.
But vice versa, too. But vice versa too.
Sure. But I think coming that earlier.
So that's, that's exactly the kind of input I'm looking for, from how to have a structure to warrant.
And also on, on Article 17 in the past, have we broken those out into their own articles? Each of these items?
We have. And that's, it's a little, it makes it more difficult to track them as, as we, um, move them through the process. So it would, it would be easier to have them all be Article 17.
The only concern would be if somebody doesn't want to vote on the entire package. Would we have to take up each item individually?
Tony would go through it. Um, I've already spoken with him about this. He would go through it by section.
Okay.
Just like, do, does anyone have any questions about this, about that, about this? Yeah, that sort of thing. So.
If somebody wants to remove something, they can make an amendment to move, remove it or adjust it or.
And, and he would go through it by section for clarity.
As long as there is some flexibility or ability of residents to voice an objection and.
Oh, always.
Without jeopardizing the entire list.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you, you, yeah.
It being under one article, so.
Right. No, it, it's, um, yeah, that's common and easily done.
Okay.
Okay. So is that what you have for us on the warrant tonight, Tom? Or is there anything else?
Uh, I think that's all for the grant.
Okay.
And was that general agreement to move the citizens petition to the, uh, to the front?
Uh, yes.
Mark, can you support this?
Bob, you good with that? Moving citizens petition to the front?
What was that, Joe?
Moving the citizen petition to the front. So you may have missed it earlier, but we were presented tonight with a citizens petition regarding our sidewalks and to use concrete rather than asphalt. Okay, so that's one. And, um, our last meeting, Bud requested a, um, a pavement replacer to use asphalt, which is a piece of equipment for 64,000. So if a citizen petition passes, then we don't need that piece of equipment, right? So, but also probably just move citizens petition to the front of the, of the warrant anyways in general, cause that gets more, more interest of people attending the meeting in general.
Yeah, I just worried about she's not gonna get much money for concrete. This is above laptop, so.
It's gonna be, yeah, well, it's gonna, it'll be an interesting, Todd's doing a lot of research, which I have a document for you in your folder, which I'll, I'll leave for you. So.
Okay.
And he's working, he's trying to work with, not trying, he is working with Bud on conversations and what other towns are doing. So we'll see what this all kind of shakes out. But, but in general, no objection to moving that for?
No, not at all.
Okay, thanks, Bud. Um, you good, Tom?
Yeah.
On that? Okay. 13, discussion request for partial payment for sewer lateral. I think that's what Mr. Boyle is referring to. So we have a request from Pierce Machine?
Yes, and you should have my one pager discussing the issue as well. We did, in researching this request, run into some very interesting and disturbing information. And.
Interesting and disturbing. You have my attention.
Both, yeah. Um, I've spoken with town council about various ways we might approach this and, um, the chances of our getting complete satisfaction are very, very low and very expensive if we, if we went that way. When the reconstruction.
But maybe you should explain it for what's transpired here.
Well.
Okay.
You do have this and you got that on Thursday.
Let me just read this into the record for our folks in the audience and folks in the home or in the home and for our, um, media as well. It'll just take me probably two minutes to read this. So this is a request for partial payment of sewer laterals, which is connected, and some folks haven't been connected appropriately when, um, that street was completed by the state. So in 2016, the town contracted it, Balthazar? Is that how you pronounce it?
Balthazar.
Balthazar Construction for the repair of Husatonic Street. During the project, the town knew that the work would be an opportunity for residents to have the sewer laterals that ran under the street to be replaced without causing damage to the pavement. The town first offered residents from 44 West Husatonic Street to 316 East Husatonic Street, which was 18 locations, the option to pay for the work themselves. But soon, perhaps because of voiding doing that work later and disturbing the pavement would be a future benefit to the town, revises plan by proposing to cover the full cost of the work. The projecting costs were brought before town meeting, which voted to appropriate funds to cover the full cost of replacing approximately 25 sewer lateral lines, which was Article 2, June 27, 2016, special town meeting. During the work, which was overseen by a state, Balthazar only replaced 13 of the final 18 lateral lines chosen for replacement. Despite this fact, the total amount allocated for all the laterals was paid. Neither the town nor the state has records showing the change order or even erect of the decision not to install all the laterals. It is unclear which party is responsible for the decision, including the decision to pay Balthazar the full amount. Town council has applied that given the absence of any documentation would be extremely difficult to successfully recover any funds from Balthazar for charging the full amount without performing all the expected work. In 2023, a sewer lateral broke at 74 East Husatonic Street. The Pierce Machine Company, the lateral was replaced by the owner, Mr. Mark Bush, is how you pronounce his last name? At a cost of 16,000. This was one that had been scheduled to be replaced, but was not. The invoice from the contractor performed the work states the line was Armentberg Pipe, which was not used after the 1970s, and suggests that the pipe had not been replaced by Balthazar during the 2016 project. Upon further investigation, two members of the highway crew during the project recall, during the project, recall that the number of sewer lines were not installed, though they do not recall any reason for the decision. Two of the remaining four laterals that were not replaced in 2016 are for the same business, Pierce Machine Company, with the other two for separate addresses. The owner of the business has asked the town to pay for a portion of the total cost of the recent repair, $6,000 of the total $16,000 cost. As the town has no legal obligation to pay the sewer laterals to be replaced in 2016, the town arguably has no legal obligation to provide relief for the business owner today. The town may have created an expectation that the work would be completed in 2016 though, and the select board may wish to consider seeking an appropriation to cover the cost to town meeting. Uh, the board may also wish to state that any action taken is not precedent for any future similar occurrences. So thank you for that memo. So I think it lines it up pretty nicely.
That was a fair amount of big.
Yeah, I can imagine. Any questions on, on that memo from the board? No? Okay.
So I think I've laid out the kind of problems, which are, the town didn't do what it said it was going to do, but the town didn't pay for what it was, it said it was going to do. So, um, it's a sort of question of fairness. Is it fair to ask the town to pay twice for the same work? Is it fair to, um, ask the people who sort of expected replacement, um, not to have their lines replaced? There's certain, again, it, it was not the town's responsibility to install those laterals. It was a gift from the town, um, for that project. The project was not completed as planned. We can't assign responsibility at this point, eight years later, for that decision. So the question is that we have a current request for partial payment for replacing a line that broke unexpectedly. And, um, so that's, that's the question of policy before the board.
Well, I think if we paid for 18 and we only had 13, there's five that need to replace at some point along the way. Right?
I always got a distinct impression because I was involved in that. It was 19 we paid for, $190,000 or $10,000 apiece. And five of them weren't done. So where did that money go? Obviously where it went, it was not gonna be covered, I understand. But I don't think you can put a disclaimer out there that says, "We won't do this for anybody else," when you set a precedent by subsidizing, uh, Pierce, Pierce Machine Channel. So I don't know what the board was. I'm not crazy about this, but.
Well, I know whose fault it's that. It's not ours. It's not the residents' fault.
No, it's the state.
It's Balthazar's fault. That's what it comes down to. Balthazar's fault.
What Tom didn't also say is, this was a Husatonic Street rehabilitation was a state project.
Right.
However, it's a recommendation of the road boss at the time. I'm not even gonna mention his name, cause now you're gonna mention names. He recommended this course of action, which was separate from the state rehabilitation. So we asked the town manager, in his wisdom, asked Balthazar for an estimate. And that's the estimate he got, $10,000 per lateral. And, uh, I don't know if he got the other ones.
So John, what you're, what you're sharing is that although the road was a state project, we kind of, it's like, it's like the doll, it's like the, it's like the doll division. We're gonna do a sewer in conjunction with that, but the, the sewer connection was our project.
Yep. Yep. And so we can't.
So it's not the state issue. It's, it would be our project issue.
Yeah, it's gonna be our issue and.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Tom.
There's, there's a, something I just want to clear up. We did enter into an agreement with the state for them to manage that project for us.
Then that backs you up only, right? Then the state, the state's responsible.
We have that agreement.
Yeah, but they don't recover the.
And they, and the state.
I don't know.
The one that signed for the work to be done. What we don't know is why all of the work wasn't done.
Did, so did they, so they, so they as managing the project oversaw from a project management perspective and would sign off on the project being completed to pay invoices? We'd have to have some documentation.
Who signed off on the requisitions?
All we have is, is the initial, we have the final.
Engineer.
Cost. Yeah, yeah. And, and, and again, the state does not have records of a change order.
So the requisitions don't have change orders attached to them related to these replacements at all? They were just done?
We have virtually, we have very little paperwork about this aspect of the project.
It was kind of done on the spur of the moment, I think.
It was.
And towards the end of the project.
And we, and we signed over to the state, here's the money. They said, yes. And then they gave us a final bill and they paid the final bill.
Do we have a signed agreement of them taking on this sewer project?
Yes.
So that, that's a legal document and we know that it wasn't completed? That's.
Right. What we don't know is what they knew.
We don't need to know.
Right. You're asking, you're asking to prove.
We don't need to know.
Right. We're saying, well, we don't have any documents that there was a change. Okay, well, that's not on us. You show, Balthazar, you show us that you don't have that, that you have a change in work order. We have pipes that have been in there since before John Boyle was born, 1800.
Hey, oh. So I should disclose right now that my house was one of these laterals.
I know. You made the motion at the meeting.
Yeah.
And again, town council does not believe that after eight years, we're going to be able to make any headway.
So when, when, when it breaks.
Try to get recompense.
It's not eight years.
For, for how this happened. We don't know who made the decision.
So if it.
We don't know anything.
Well, Tom, of the, of the 18, and of the five that weren't done, how many are attached to a resident's home that might need to come up with 16, $20,000 if something breaks?
One.
One.
Three are Pierce Machine Company. One is LP Adams. One is the resident.
Okay, so that resident has an issue. Are we gonna be held liable to fix that?
No, because our town council says this was a gift that the town offered to residents. The fact that we didn't give it to them is no, no legal repercussions for the town.
Well, we've established a precedent. We mean, there's no legal. It's always legal.
But how do we know that, Tom? How do we know that there's five?
Uh, based on the two members of the highway crew during the project recall where that, where that divided.
So there's no, if there's no legal, then why are we paying six grand?
I.
If it was a gift.
Here I said I would bring the issue to the.
Okay, can I, is there a motion of whether not to accept or?
Can I just say, I agree with you, Joe.
I don't think we should do anything else on this matter.
Well, I think we should send, our attorneys should send Balthazar, uh, either a registered letter and say, "You didn't complete this, the work you were contracted to pay, contracted to do it and were paid for. We didn't discover this recently and we think you are negligent or some sort of whatever."
But were they contracted directly through the town or the state?
No, from the town.
And then the state just oversaw the project?
Yeah. I didn't know the state oversaw that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Again, they would ignore the letter and we would bring them to court and they would say, "We don't have that documentation anymore."
No, you send them a letter. I'm not saying take anybody to court. See what they say. Maybe they'll run up here and do it. I doubt it. They're in London. But I think, I think we owe them.
But they should be, there should be something on record. I would agree, Mr. Boyle. There should be something on record that goes to, goes to that contractor, but also goes to the state because the state tracks the quality of projects. So if they already know that we have issues, let it be on the record.
And we did ask the state for any, any records related to that. They did not have any. We do not seem to have any for the thing that I was able to do. Now, I maybe, it could be that I missed something, but I did find the major project file on it and went through it.
Yeah.
So you're gonna move, yeah, we change orders. Did I interrupt you?
I was just kind of added to where you're going.
Yeah, but you were gonna make a motion.
Uh, I was gonna make a motion to deny their request for the 6,000.
Second.
Any discussions?
I'm not gonna, I, I don't necessarily think that Mr. Boyle's idea about sending him a letter.
I don't agree with that. That wasn't part of the motion, was it?
No, just, just to deny the 6,000.
This is discussion.
I mean, you can make that motion after, but.
Oh, I can amend the motion. I amend the motion that a strongly worded letter by our attorney pointed out that to the company, Balthazar Construction, a law, yeah, no, not law.
Well, we would ask for any documentation they have because it very well had been signed off.
Whenever a lawyer says, yes, we want him to say, in strong words. It just came to our attention now, when the local business went up to the lateral and it wasn't there.
We request any documentation you have regarding the, uh, the project.
I amend that we, the motion that we sent the letter.
I'll second the amount.
Okay, so we're denying the 6,000, we're sending the letter.
No, no, no. We, no, we're doing both.
That's what I'm saying. We're not, we're not, we're not approving the 6,000 and we send them the letter. That's all in the motion. Okay.
That's reasonable. I mean, I think at the end of the day, I think the town seemed to have done their best in the moment. Um, obviously we fell short, uh, but I don't think it was necessarily our responsibility.
They just didn't do it.
Well, yeah.
It's Balthazar.
That's true. We didn't fall short, but we're the ones who are left holding the buck, if you will, or Pierce's at this point. Um, and maybe any other, you know, future businesses impacted LP Adams and the other residents, but yeah. Um, yeah, okay, I can support that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, and Bob?
I oppose it because I think something should be done about it. Uh, the town was in good faith. We paid for that. Uh, these people were expecting it to be done. Somebody from the town signed off on that. There's no threat then, any other liability from the town. So I think we owe the citizens a right. If we told them we fixed it, it's not their fault. Uh, somebody from the town didn't follow through on us.
I think that could be part of our letter when we respond to it, saying that we're, we're looking into it as far as reaching out to Balthazar. It's foreigner options.
I think we could consider a future, uh, request or future consideration once we hear back from Balthazar and get more information. But I think just taking me to face value without more information, I, I don't want to support it.
And, and I would question asking the town to pay for it twice.
Yeah.
You know, it, it wasn't an obligation of the town. It was a gift. The gift fell through, um, and we're, of course, you know, very, very upset by that, but.
You may be there that we hear back from Balthazar. We may never hear back from.
Let's see.
Put a timeframe on it, 90 days.
The, the other thing that I was, uh, wondering was, uh, sending a letter to the people who, whose lateral should have been replaced and say, "We believe that your lateral may not have been replaced during this. Please be aware that you may have your old lateral." I don't know.
Yeah, they should be aware. But let's cross that bridge when we find out more information.
Yeah, get the, yeah, get the letter to Balthazar.
So we're not, we're not approving the rec. So we're not approving the record, the $6,000 request at the moment. We're wait, we're gonna send a letter, get more information, see what records we can get, and then revisit the issue altogether. Is that our plan?
I think that sounds good, yeah.
Bob, is that...
Yeah.
Open to revisiting.
So we're not closing it, we're just gonna say no for now and then wait for more information? Okay. All right. What's next? Updated EV charging station proposal. Hello again.
How are you? Long night. I see it's cool. Thank you for hearing me out and I want to thank you for moving ahead with the level three chargers to Livingston, so I hope that all comes to fruition. I wanted to follow up on my last meeting regarding level two chargers here at the Senior Center. I presented you with some information in terms of the costs. So I calculated the tax rate for the average homeowner, both the initial allocations required are $36,000 plus, net would be $13,000 plus. I've also indicated that last year, this being a sister program, as I said, it would be the same chargers that will be installed this spring at the CRA, that would be installed here. That money was ARPA money, and in fact, once those are installed with CRA, the town will recoup $23,000 through the DDP at Eversource and as the contract indicates. So that money more than offsets what's requested here at the Senior Center. I'm really pleased that when I spoke to people, both private individuals and communities in terms of the operational costs regarding chargers, whether they're charge point or I believe one metal they have ENDLX, that it's minimal, it's inconsequential. Charge port sends reports, emails, updates. There were some snafus in terms of monies being deposited. The systems run themselves and that was good to hear. Secondary to that, when I followed up with Universal, Dave Callahan, who was the R contractor, I spoke very highly of Universal and I have to hear this discussion just recently about contractors. I think that's a big thing. Dave Callahan has always been somebody and he's spoken him well. He'll be the contractor. I'm assuming he gets the bid for this job. I shouldn't assume that, but if he did, that'd be a wonderful thing. There are incentives for EVs, which I pointed out for 24, and those are going to make it easier to purchase EVs, as I've said, both at the state level where there'll be rebates of at least a minimum of $3,500, but depending on one's income and a trade-in, it'll go for $6,000 to $9,000. At the federal level, the same applies, it'll be at the point of sale, rebates in the amount of $7,500 for new and $4,000 for used. And so that eliminates a lot of wait time and paperwork. The biggest issue is EV vehicles themselves. There is a short supply. And I called around Berkshire County and as you can see, Bedard and Haddad have zero all-electric vehicles for which these rebates and credits would apply. McGee Volkswagen has three out of 37, Johnson Ford has five out of 141. I think if we took that survey across the state, you'd see that there's not a lot of EV vehicles out there. And so this past year was the year where more EV vehicles were sold in this country than any previous year, and I think that trend's gonna continue. I also want to point out that the queue is getting filled. There is just a fixed amount of money, and as I've spoken over the course of the year, there have been more chargers installed. For the cost of the bottom line of $13,000 here at the Senior Center, we're gonna have infrastructure of tens of thousands of dollars installed, gratis. And when I say gratis, it's really our money. This is money that we pay through Eversource and through state, and this money is gonna come back to us. So it's gonna be there, it's foundational, it's progressive, it's positive, it's prudent. And it's just a matter of time before EVs are gonna be part of our lifestyle in terms of meeting the states and the federal goals of reducing carbon emissions. So I hope you look favorably upon this and allocate the money to court.
And this is the money article, the $37,000 level two electric charging station? Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we get the rebate?
You get the rebate that reduces 13...
Down to 13, yeah.
I will say one thing too, Dan, and you know, information really comes quickly and I want, hopefully, I can get this to Tom, hopefully this week, but Voltech was a provider who hadn't submitted a final bid yet, and they did have an engineer come out with their representative. And I think it's more an opportune time now to look at level two here because supposedly their engineer says that this site is not make ready for level three in terms of the additional cost to bring in 480 volts. It would be excessive and Eversource would not be agreeable to that. So in fact, the Senior Center may only be looking at level two chargers, which makes it even more pressing in terms of getting in the line, getting that infrastructure, and getting it done. So again, I hope you look favorably upon this.
Yeah, I'm in support of this.
Mr. Chair, can I answer a question about this you asked at our last meeting?
Sure.
You had brought up a really big point about, well, shouldn't we see what usage is? And so I did some poking around, just trying to understand that myself, and it turns out that this is really a build it and they will come situation because all these EV drivers have apps on their phones to tell them where charging stations are, and we're right off of the highway. So they will come and we will be able to benefit income-wise from that, but it has to, you have to have working stations for us.
That's true, sure.
I'll also add that with the change to voting location, there's gonna be poll workers, there's gonna be poll workers, there's gonna be town staff who may drive electric vehicles who may need to be present here during those times who could take advantage of that, as well as just general visitors to the Senior Center, as well as our public meetings. I think there's overall net benefit to the town and the cost is not substantial by any means. And there's a huge amount of support from the rebate structure, so...
So to summarize, if I understand what we've approved, or could get some things, how many things, replacing this one with the Senior Center?
Right, removing it.
Removing it?
Pay it right out.
Are we putting a new one in?
We're putting in, much like the CRA, two stations with a maximum level two power, four ports, ADA compliant.
Yep, and then we have the Pine Grove?
Pine Grove is, we're hopefully moving forward with the level three and also Greenridge Park.
And did we already approve that?
Yeah, last.
Yes.
With that, Tony, I think at that point in time, we had made a decision on the equipment that was out here, whether it was cheaper to fix it or put a new one in.
It's gonna be done.
As part of this, I think we're all agreeing with that. That's the way it felt, yeah.
And then Greenridge was in or out, sorry?
In.
In, but in the same location, huh?
At the park.
And that was all rebate and vendor funded?
That is, Livingston is gratis for five years.
So the total cost to us for all this is gonna be 13 grand?
Once the rebate for this gets in.
Yeah, so that's gonna be a... Yeah, so this is great, this is good. Thank you for all that work. Yeah, and answering all those questions, just trying to figure it out. Is interest in the stats that you ran about the numbers of EV vehicles in the county is shocking a little bit, right?
A lot of research.
It's a little shocking, but then to your point also, you documented, you waited nine months for yours, right?
I did, I did. Nine months through two years. So yeah, let's hope the trend turns that way, especially the more renewable solar and wind coming online to generate power for this coal that's falling behind on goodness and so...
And then, Tom, all of the maintenance on this seems very turnkey and easy and no major issues. Would this fall into Jeff's purview or would it fall under DPW purview or whoever sees the program? Both from a maintenance and also looking at the revenue coming in?
Probably DPW. Because they're around the parks anyway.
Right, right, makes sense.
It's separate from the buildings.
Yes, okay, all right. Any questions? Bob, any questions?
Oh, good.
All right, thank you so much. Do we need to make a motion on this or approve it or are we good?
TA, I think, is what it really comes down to. It's gonna be a money article for the voters to decide.
Yeah, it's on that list, I think so.
TA.
Get it nailed down, it's good.
All right, very good.
Excellent.
The paint stewardship legislation.
Hello, Tom.
Hello. I need to hand out for folks.
Thanks.
Top page is my comments. Page two begins the first exhibit. Page three begins the second exhibit that I'll refer to when I speak. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak. That's no, my name is Tom Marwana, I live at 54 Central Avenue, Dalton. We last discussed paint stewardship, the program that allows people to drop off unwanted participating retailers at gun cost in May of last year. The focus at that time was getting legislative support. That effort, now complete, led to 29 representatives and 12 senators becoming sponsors or co-sponsors of that legislation, including our Berkshire legislators. This facilitated paint stewardship being viewed favorably on January 18th by the Environment and Natural Resources Committee and being sent to the Ways and Means Committee for further consideration, which is reason for considerable optimism. However, the task now before us is to clearly demonstrate to the Ways and Means Committee that municipalities view as important implementing programs are very in relief to the solid waste issue, such as the paint stewardship program. Ways and Means legislators have commented to me in person that adding supportive resolutions from at least 40 municipalities by mid to late April will be interpreted by them as demonstrating the need level of priority for the House and Ways and Means Committee to consider this legislation. Presently, 24 municipalities have passed resolutions or have written letters of endorsement. Tonight, I respectfully request that Dahl again consider adding their value and support resolution to this important effort. These resolutions are consistent with the state's plan. As highlighted in your first exhibit, page two of your handout, the MNA is support. Your second exhibit, page three, is the residential waste section of the 43-page DEP or Mass DEP 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan, where paint EPR is called out as contributor moving escape towards zero waste. That's highlighted on the back page of the Mass DEP Solid Waste Master Plan. Of particular note, this master plan, using 2008 to the baseline, calls for 30% reduction in waste in 2030 and a 90% reduction by 2025. Without stewardship programs, how can we possibly get to these numbers? Why is the law needed? Without the protection of this law, an antitrust suit can be brought against Paint Care, the nonprofit created by the paint manufacturers, because they receive the fee collected at the time of purchase to cover the cost of falling and processing the paint. The issue is that any suit would cost millions, litigate, almost certainly bankrupt this nonprofit system. You might ask, can we wait? Paint stewardship, since it's not addressing an apparent crisis, might be considered something we can wait on. However, make no mistake, the crisis looms. There is no time to wait. Implementing robust product stewardship programs covering our needs, including paint, mattresses, packaging, solar panels, electronics, and lithium charger batteries, will take a minimum of 15 to 20 years of concerted effort. As a result, our collective interests are best served by starting that journey now by supporting the first step, paint stewardship. Therefore, since this program, as we previously discussed, will be something that Dahl residents will value, and since there will be no cost to Dahl, and since significant municipal support through resolutions is critical to compel serious consideration and favorable review of paint stewardship by the Ways and Means Committee, I respectfully request that the Dahl Select Board act now and add their value endorsement of paint stewardship by passing this support resolution. A draft resolution is the last page of your handout. Thank you for your attention and we'd be happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any questions on the board?
I don't know why we wouldn't, I doubt it.
Yeah, I think we should support this.
Support it, I was asking if, if we could alter this, if we wanted to add our own. Yeah.
Yeah, send you the...
But as long as we sign it and submit it.
Yeah, Steve, I'll send you the word version to it and...
No, I don't think we want to alter it, but who do we submit this to?
You submit it to me, because what I do is I bundle them up and send them to the Chair of the Senate, the Chair of the House, and the Maine Oriented Leader.
I would move that we support that proposal.
Let me go ahead and read this into the record then, for the resolution in support of paint stewardship legislation. Whereas landfill capacity in Massachusetts that are rapidly declining, no new capacity expected, and the cost of pollen and disposal of waste materials have increased by over 30% in the last five years and are expected to continue increasing at similar rates. And a paint stewardship law would create a convenient collection network to properly manage all architectural paint from businesses and residential sectors and substantially decrease inappropriate discard of paint, which is a toxic substance that can cause harmful environmental pollution. And a paint stewardship law will divert paint from waste disposal to its best and highest use, whereby there would be a small but real decrease in total waste going to landfills. And paint stewardship laws have been demonstrated as an effective means of diverting paint from landfills in our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, and New York. And a law supporting discarding of latex and oil-based paints at participating retail stores and transfer stations, strong support from constituents. And municipal waste management systems were established a century ago to manage waste like ashes, food scraps, and horse manure, rather than a wider array of manufactured goods, including paint, which dominates municipal waste. And the Massachusetts Municipal Association passed a resolution which supports statewide producer responsibility legislation in 2009, January 2019. Now, therefore, the resolve of the Select Board, Dahl, urges the Massachusetts General Court and the leadership of both chambers to view the pending paint stewardship legislation favorably and take whatever actions are necessary to pass. The paint stewardship bills into law include a vote in favorably out of any and all committees. A paint stewardship law will begin relieving municipalities and consumers of ever rising solid waste management costs, significantly reduce the toxic waste going to landfills, and decrease greenhouse gases generated by the paint industry by 4%. Pending paint stewardship legislation, the 2023-2024 legislative session includes bills, House Bill 23, an act relative to paint recycling, Senate Bill 542, an act to establish state paint stewardship, and Senate Bill 551, an act relative to paint recycling. And with that, I have a motion to accept that resolution.
Go, second.
Motion's second, any discussion?
Can I say something, Joe?
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
I strongly support this. When I was the Chair of Conservation Commission, somebody, I went to the side streets, up off of North Street, dumped quite a bit of paint down the stonewall, which ended up into Center Pond. And when we were doing cleanup with the Boy Scouts and the river and stuff, we used to find all kinds of paint cans in there, so I strongly suggest we support this.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bishop. Yeah, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Do we, Joe, do we want to sign one copy or all?
He's getting it started right now.
We'll sign it.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
There will only be three signatures today, I don't know if we want to get Bob's.
I'll be back on the 25th if you want to wait for that.
There's no harm in that because I'm sending them out in bundles. I sent out the first bundle tomorrow, and then so the next bundle of five will go out next week, so that would be fine.
I'm sure Roger will want to sign it too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, thank you for that great work, by the way.
Do you want to take this one now or do we put it in the packet for all the signed stuff?
Yeah, I can take it.
Beautiful, and you'll give your boss one, is ready?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Tom. Have a good evening.
Can we table sixteen until Monday, until that Monday meeting? Because we're going to go through.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And I just wanted to distinguish the projects from the equipment. These are projects that I have on. I have recently got the police department's capital equipment, first draft of their capital plan, so I may recall seeing the highway version of that. I now have one for the police department, so that's a great start on the equipment part of it.
Okay. All right, so we can table that? No objection?
No objection.
Can we table the digital annual report? Is that okay if we defer that? Wait, because we don't need that this year, right?
Uh, right, yeah, we, you know, we thought we might be able to move quickly enough on it, but there's a lot of research as to how much it would cost us, it would actually cost us, we still have to mail out the warrant, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So just.
Maybe the twenty-fifth for that one, not next week?
Yeah, that's fine.
For digital annual report discussion?
Yeah, we're having, we need next Monday?
Just budget?
Yeah.
Final budget?
What day is it?
Monday.
Eighteenth, right?
Yes. If you'll be recovered from St. Patrick's Day by then.
Maybe, maybe not, depends. Depends on the weather.
Dental surgery.
Oh.
Yeah, Latin.
Uh, Tom, may I interrupt you?
Yes, thanks. As you can see, I've been mostly with developing the budget and the warrant for town meeting. In other news, Dalton Fire District Chief Tobin reported that the district had decided to move forward with a suit against Northern Fire Department regarding their failure to provide the tower truck. On another fire chief note, he's consulted with his crew as the town's forest organ and does not, and believes he does not need the trailer approved at last year's town meeting. We can close that if the town and the funds will revert to next year's free cash. In more DPW news, I've sent out, in DPW news, sorry, I have sent out the invitation for bids to repair the Highway Garage roof. It will be published on state websites on Wednesday, and bids are due April twenty-fourth. In DPW personnel news, the administrative assistant has resigned her position as DPW administrative assistant for a position at the Pittsfield Airport, and an equipment operator has also resigned to return to his old employer. In other personnel news, the assistant collector has given her notice and will be returning to a previous employer. In more procurement news, I'm also in the final steps of reviewing the climate action plan requests for proposals as authorized at last year's town meeting and expect to send that out soon. I'm continuing to work on a response to Cape Cod builder's rebuttal to our negative evaluation. I met with the architect last week and drafted an initial response. I've reached out to the former building and ground superintendent for any input he cares here, and I'm in touch with both DCM and town council regarding the process. We've concluded our state cybersecurity review and are ready to brief the Select Board an executive session for security reasons whenever it is convenient. The sale of the Bardin property is proceeding as planned. If all goes as planned, closing will be this Friday, March fifteenth. Finally, we just received notice of our FY twenty-twenty-five Chapter Ninety of portionment of two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. That said, we can look forward to fair share money coming in through the Chapter Ninety program as well, which was about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars last year.
Sort of a three thirty, please?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great addition. I'm really pleased that they went for the transportation portion of it being distributed through Chapter Ninety.
Yeah.
And that's my report.
On the, on the, on the fire district, did we hear back when we sent that letter? Well, actually, now they're taking legal action, but in the, in the I Berkshires article, it stated that they were going to consider other needs for the ARPA funds that they have in the balance, but they, am I correct in my message to them saying they can't take that action without Select Board approval?
Uh, yes, and I think I've also been clear that the memo, as, as we know, that granted them those funds, made it specific for a tower truck.
So they have to return the balance to us?
I would say that that would be the appropriate thing for them to do.
How do we, how do we enforce them to take that action? By showing up at their meeting and pounding my fist on the table, by a letter from our lawyers?
Well, we sent a letter requesting return of the funds.
Yeah, they're not going to do it though. This is a problem.
Well, let's give them the opportunity.
I don't know that they're not going to do it.
I sense that they're not going to do it.
They're, they're, they're having their, I guess they have a monthly meeting, right? At the end of the month, towards the end of the month?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't know, like, third Tuesday or something, I think that what it is, but.
So that, that will be when they will be.
They didn't respond to my email with my kind, with my kind reminder that the funds are just supposed to be for the tower truck and no other, so I got no response.
And I've spoken to the chief on that as well.
And what's his response?
He understands the situation clearly.
That they're going to return the funds? What you are demanding to them, are you demanding to them to return the funds or no?
I am letting them know that they can't use the funds for any purpose other than a fire.
So they either have to come, they either have to come before the board, they either have to come before the board to request new items to be used.
Oh, yeah.
Right, or return the funds.
Yeah, they, they understand that, and I've, and, and I think they also understand, I think at least the chief understands that it is unlikely that it would be used for other funds at this point, for other purposes.
So why not make it easy? Just pick up the phone, let's pick up the phone and call them and tell them to return the funds and figure out the mechanics.
I think they've gotten that message very clearly.
By April first?
That, that's.
Because that's what the memo said, that they have to return the funds by April first. That's what, that's what the letter said.
Oh.
If I recall, the letter, the letter from the board.
Oh, okay, right.
Right, so let's, let's, let's remind them of that, and let's get those funds back so we can appropriate those funds to other needs with the town.
I would propose that we put in a future agenda item post-April first, the first meeting in April.
No, it's a post-April first, it's a deadline.
Well, I don't need to talk about it anymore until they.
We do, it's a part of town manager update, it's part of town manager update, it's perfectly done. We have to have another meeting on this. We're pretty clear.
If they don't give us.
If they don't give us a fund by April first, then we'll take other action.
That's what I would say.
Right.
But are we a hundred percent convinced that this truck isn't going to, uh, get repaired and repaired or whatever it is?
Yeah, they, they're moving forward with legal action.
Yeah, because. Yeah, but they, there's, you know, okay, so you're, we're all positive, there's, it's a dead issue as far as it being.
The vendor missed, the vendor missed one of the key dates that they, that the water commission set, so that's what drove to the action, taking legal action.
Yeah, I'm well.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you too, Joe, we should big, the message, Tom says they have it, I'm hopeful that's right, but don't we have saved some bucks, turn the money to the town by this date? And don't you, no, use it for other purposes.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. I jumped ahead and moved my stuff down, please. Been along all night.
Future agenda items.
Yeah, any future agenda items?
I know, we're busy now on all this stuff, but do we have any plans to proceed with negotiations or consideration of the TM's catch rate?
No, I think we're, I think we're into a renewal year.
Yeah, when we decided?
I don't.
I haven't decided, you haven't decided anything. We did the evaluation, interim evaluation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you know, it's the Christmas season, we can.
Sounds like an item for a future agenda.
Yeah.
I don't think we can discuss it now.
No.
I suppose you could, if you wanted, but.
No, I don't, I didn't even say that.
All right, so we can put the town manager's contract.
Should do something.
Any other? Any other agenda items?
Well, no, I'm not, it really isn't an agenda, just a.
No, future agenda.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can start that following the mic.
And then anticipate forty-eight hours before the meeting? Any remarks to the select board? I have one. Pete, what's Pete's last name, it's Ryan Forrest Smithy.
Pete White?
Pete White. He had reached out, he wanted to come before the select board. I sent him a reply basically saying, you're more than welcome to come for us, but we would do it for any candidate, right? So we would do it for any candidate that wants to come.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know if you want to, I don't know if you want to use that or not, I don't know.
Lose connection with the chairman, Michelle Marantz. She just informed me, she's chairman of the Dalton Democratic Committee, and she plans to invite all candidates to a candidate forum in Dalton.
Okay.
But.
But use that, not, not.
Well, it's up to you, Joe, I mean.
I prefer not to.
Yeah, I don't like the evolved.
Yeah, I prefer not to, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right form. All right.
Yeah, she's very active, and she just took it all over.
Great, okay. Announcements, annual car permits, bags, stickers, recycling-only car permits are available for purchase at the transport station and on the town's website. There are numerous communities and boards with vacancies. Please see the town's website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board, must be a Dalton resident. Please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two four nine three for more information. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which will result in prices lower than current resource prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail or to opt-in or opt-out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. Dalton Police Department would like to remind residents of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three through April fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. There will be no parking allowed on streets between these dates and between the hours of one AM and six AM. Department of Public Works would like to remind residents to remove basketball hoops in the roadway, as well as ones that hang over the roadway between the dates of November first, twenty-twenty-three, and April fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. Next meeting, next special meet, the next special meeting is scheduled to take place Monday, March eighteen, twenty-twenty-four, at seven o'clock at the senior center with an option for remote participation. And with that, do we still want to do this executive session for the minutes, Tom? No, defer that? Okay, we'll defer that to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll defer that. And with that, kind of motion to adjourn, so moved? Is there a second?
There is.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, and Bob, you're yes on adjournment? You're yes on to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, thanks for joining us, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.